For the City of Columbian, the Committee Council meeting on this November seventh, twenty twenty-three. We will have Deanne lead us in the invocation, and then we will have our two student representatives, Darren Pedesini and Dr. Clark, uh, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Deanne, you're called to roll.
Becker? Souter?
Here.
McBain?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Banner? Noel?
Yeah.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? There are none, they'll be accepted as submitted. At this point regarding our reading of communications, uh, I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas Paul Rance was a lifelong resident of Columbiana, and a loving and devoted husband, father, and grandfather, and a wonderful friend to all who met him. Whereas Paul was co-owner and operator of Coal Pump Company, a prominent company in the City of Columbiana for many years. And whereas he served our country in the U.S. Navy, and we are thankful for his service and dedication. And whereas he was an active member of the Saint Jude Roman Catholic Church in Columbiana, where he was also a member of the Fourth Degree at Knights of Columbus, and whereas Paul was the true epitome of Luke twelve forty-eight. Much is required from those whom much is given. He devoted his time and talents to the community he loved. His words of encouragement and support were always there as he served on the Chamber of Commerce, American Legion Post two ninety, the Columbiana Rotary Club, and the Forty and Eight Society of Veterans Post two seventy-three. Now therefore, by unanimous acclamation of the Mayor, City Council, and the City Manager, we do hereby proclaim November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, to be Paul Rance Day in the City of Columbiana. And, uh, we made the state November seventeenth because, as many of you know, Paul was, did a lot of things in Columbiana, but one thing that I know best was his active involvement in the Christmas parade. And, um, going back to the years when we had it on a Saturday afternoon and about three hundred people came, and that it was Paul's idea, why don't we have it at night? And, um, so he instituted the nighttime Christmas parade. Now we get like three thousand people to come to Columbiana and enjoy the Christmas parade. It's become a huge event. And, um, I just know that I was fortunate to serve on the committee back in the day, and Paul was so great about getting the committee together and dividing up all the responsibilities and he was so positive. That was the best thing about Paul. It was always a good day, want to get things done, and he worked so well with everyone. So I think it's going to be fantastic. We will recognize the day of our Christmas parade is as Paul Rance Day. So, um, and I hope all of you can be there. Next item on the agenda, and Lance may have some more comments regarding Paul in a few minutes. Reports of Commissions and Board of the Park and Recreation Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three have been submitted to you. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? There are none, they will be accepted as submitted. Next on our agenda, we have recognition of persons desiring to appear. First, we have Debbie Hines, President of the Historical Society of Columbiana Purple Township. To discuss the update on the Fix the Sticks project.
Well, I didn't come to, I did not come to give you an update on Fix the Sticks so much, as just to say thank you. Uh, we had our last fundraising event for the season at, um, the cemetery and despite the drizzle.
Let's come up to the mic, and in that way we'll, because you're, you're really an important person.
Oh, yeah. In my own mind, I'm important, let me tell you. Anyways, I'd like to just say thank you on behalf of the society for the fundraisers that we ra- that we had this year. And the last one, of course, being the most important one, the Citizens of the Cemetery Tour, Chapter Two. And despite the drizzle, we did have a hundred and forty-some people, uh, buy tickets. We did ra- we did add twenty... I have notes.
So you really did come to give us an update?
Yeah. Jay was supposed to come to give you an update on anything you might have, but, um, anyways, we still did twenty-two hundred dollars to the coffers. And with everything that we've received, um, and going to receive this evening, we've broken the hundred thousand dollar mark for one year. I think that's good. So, um, but the cooperation from Tim and the Park and Cemetery Board has been outstanding in, in everything that we wanted to do. And, uh, I just thank the city for the cooperation. I mean, you have made the Historical Society this year, um, come alive with the project, and I'm thankful for that too, and we've got more to do. So anyways, that's it. And I guess maybe the only update what is that we've got enough money to proceed on the, chapel, and I, I think you gave the okay to go ahead. So we're good. Thank you. That's, I just want to say thank you, and of course, we did have participants again from.
Thank you, Debbie. What will we do with our vote?
We live, yeah, live in the township.
Uh, next, we have, um, Deanne Davis from the Columbiana Community Foundation, Secretary to present a grant check to the Historical Society for the Fix the Sticks project.
Purpose of the Community Foundation is to fund worthwhile projects in Columbiana and the Columbiana area. And the Fix the Sticks project is definitely a worthwhile project that we have supported in the past and are glad to be able to support again. So at this time, we would like to present the Fix the Sticks representatives with a check for ten thousand dollars from the Columbiana Community.
We'll, we'll text it to you, Justin.
She just wanted to look at it.
We're certainly blessed to have the Community Foundation in this. It's a fantastic organization and really helping us with a lot of projects in the community. So it's very great, very good. Next on the agenda is Kelly Williamson, Columbiana School Board President. We discuss the residential CRA. Kelly?
I'm not Kelly.
And actually, when I called, I think I said this.
Right, right. So, um, uh, City Council, uh, City Manager, Willard, and Attorney Mark Hudson. I'm here from the school board. I'm one of the members of the school board. My name is Scott Karen, um, along with, uh, Kelly Williamson, Don Book, and of course, our wonderful, wonderful, uh, Treasurer, Kathy Davies. Um, the reason why we're here today is to discuss and, uh, uh, in opposition of the CRA abatement that is continuing within the city itself for the fifteen years. Recently, we had a meeting talking about, uh, a commercial property. Um, and there was some discussion and, and myself and Kelly had brought up about, um, when does this plan on ending? How far does the city want to go with this and continue with this? Um, I think Mr. Liston, um, had expressed that, um, how many students were educating from that particular CRA development. Um, after gathering that information from our treasurer, there is thirty-nine students that are coming from the CRA. That is a cost to us of six thousand dollars per student, approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand. But yet, we did from Mike Harold get some information as far as from Rita, as far as the average income for some of those households. And the average income for those households is just less than a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So at the one percent, because we do have a one percent tax on income, um, that's sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. If we figure in a little bit of the property tax, we round it up to about two thousand dollars. That still leaves us in a deficit of four thousand dollars for every student every single year. The thing that, that we're looking at is, is obviously the abatement did what it was supposed to do. It built up Firestone and did all those things and, and all these things. And, and those people took advantage of it. And to be honest with you, if it was out there, I would have taken advantage of it too. But the fact is, is we're educating thirty-nine students, and it's costing the school money in order to do this and to continue with this particular program. In addition to in Columbiana County and in the city itself, property taxes have gone up on an average of thirty percent. Now, I would have to think that part of that is because of some of these five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar homes that are out there. But in addition to that, the people of Columbiana are paying taxes. Those folks are paying little to none. We're educating their children for doggone near free, which, that's not their fault. But to continue with the CRA the way it is, all it's doing is it's putting the burden on the other residents of Columbiana to pay for these students to go to school. In addition, what happens is, is, is those folks, as we just had a raise for all our officers, which by far they, they were entitled to that by far, but those folks won't share in that. They won't share in the fact of the two new ambulances that were put in here. They're not going to share in that, not for fifteen years. They're not going to share in all the other things that the city's doing and the additional things that are taking place. They're not sharing in those particular things. So what we're proposing is, is something that Kelly's going to go over with you, um, right now to City Council. And, and I have to ask you, Council members and Mayor, you folks truly believe that we're being hurt by the CRA? Can any of you answer?
I'll answer that, yeah. No, I don't believe we are. I think, um, that the, the income is more than offsetting the, the planning, the fu- basically what we're doing, Scott, is we're future-proofing. Yes, we are taking a hit right now, a small hit. But we're also seeing, we're still seeing an increase in income taxes. We're still seeing an increase in, in, in property taxes. Um, and we can go over numbers all night long. We could back and forth. That's, um, but I believe that the city is by and large benefiting, and I believe that the school district is by and large benefiting. You're getting more income? Yes, you're getting more students, although, um, again, these are numbers things that we could, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to argue about here.
Right.
Um, and, you know, we, we've been having these conversations for two years, right? So what we want to do, we want to make sure of is, we're not, we're not saying that we don't want to make changes in the CRA. Obviously, we just made one recently. What we want to do is, we want real numbers. We want to be able to say, this is why we're doing it. And for example, you know, the fifteen years, hundred percent, right? Um, getting rid of that right now, because other communities around us are starting to institute those same CRA rules. So getting rid of that right now would place us at a competitive disadvantage. Now, there's also a lot of reality to, we're almost out of developed, we're almost out of lots in town right now that actually have access to infrastructure. So for a developer to come in, they're going to have to develop those lots, putting the infrastructure. What is it, a thousand, eleven hundred dollars a foot for street and all that right now? Not to mention the cost of building, and the CRA helps to reduce the cost to the owner to, it's eventually going to have to pay that. I don't think we're going to see a whole lot of growth over the next few years between interest rates and between the, the necessary development. But like I said, we are, we're willing to talk about it, and one of the things that we've talked about in the past is information that you can give to us, right? I mean, we, we have all the income numbers and we could talk about what this means, what that means, and we could go back and forth for hours. But for example, I think at one point, um, we were, one of the conversations, one of the early ones, uh, your, your, uh, one of your lawyers was involved, and he worked with other districts that, that were in CRA areas. And I would be interested in knowing what some of those other districts, for example, I mean, are they in an area that's got a seventy-five percent tenure abatement, for example? To where we could talk to those, um, talk to those municipalities and get some insight from them. Because, I mean, we talk to other cities all the time, as I'm sure you talk to other school districts all the time. And we don't want this to be adversarial, for sure. We want this to be a collaborative thing. And I know it's frustrating for you. Um, I, believe me, I've, we've sat in these meetings and I feel it, and I know we feel it as well. Um, but we, we want to be, uh, collaborative. So, um, really what we're asking for, and you know, the thirty-nine, again, we could go back and forth on numbers. I'm not sure how.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, so, um, we could, there's impacts, and I mean, realistically, we could fig- try to figure that out in, in terms of numbers, but it, it doesn't really matter. What we want to try to do is understand what, what do you want us to do? And what do you see in other communities and other areas that they're doing that's still successful? But maybe reducing, especially, I understand the fifteen years, that's a long impact. We, you know, we feel it too. So maybe, are they doing ten years? Are they doing a hundred percent versus seventy-five? Those kind of things would help us to research what the impact would be on our community to make those same changes. So, yes, I do believe it's, it's a good thing, but I also understand that it's entirely possible that we could back it off and still be a good thing. And this is, we just want to, we don't want to just do something to do something. We want to do something because we believe it will have an impact. You know, a positive impact for everybody.
And unfortunately, with the state, we'd love to think that in fifteen years, when these people start paying, that all this money will start coming at us. But the state's much smarter than that. We might receive it for a year, and Mr. Hudson knows this, but what they do is, is they go back through and average it, and then they reduce it, and they reduce our dollars. It's unfortunate how the state goes about doing that, but they're pretty smart. They just don't want to give the dollars away if you're getting more than what you were getting before. It's just unfortunate how the state funds.
I, I understand, and, um, you know, one of the things I would be open to, as, I mean, as a private citizen, I can't speak for the city in that regard, but I would be opening city, to sitting down with, with our representatives, you know, at state level, and telling them, you know, sitting right next to you guys, and telling them, look, the way you're funding the schools makes it very difficult for all of us to, to be collaborative, because you guys have to be defensive. I get.
Oh, there's no doubt.
So for sure, we, we, again, we want to collaborate. We want to, we want to be partners in this, because I think, especially over the last few years, the school and the city have been working together tremendously well. I mean, we've been doing some great things, the Columbiana Corridor, the stuff that's going on in the parking lot. Those are your students doing that, and, and we appreciate how much the schools are contributing, not just, you know, to the students, but a good school system contributes to property values too. So it, it helps buoy up everybody. And we want to make sure that we protect that, and we don't want to do that do harm. So we just, we want to work with you.
No, no, and we appreciate, yeah. And the great thing about Columbiana schools, and we're pretty proud of it, is, is that we believe, and if you look at the analysis across the nation, forty percent of the people between thirty and forty years old are looking to purchase or build a house. Forty percent of them consider the school district before ever doing anything.
I did.
Forty percent.
I did.
So, well, what's happening within Columbiana, and it's happening out there. Yes, the abatement had a lot to do with it. But you have to understand too, that forty percent of those individuals that made that adjustment, made that commitment, those people did it because of the fact of the school district they're moving into. And it's one of the top school districts in the state of Ohio. We just don't want to be harmed anymore by this and be hurt, because thirty-nine students is a lot of students. And then the impact not only on the school district, but on the public, the rest of the residents in Columbiana, that they're paying for those students. Those individuals are paying for those students. That's, it's, it's, it's hard to, to fathom that and get that, but it's something. So we're moving forward. Um, we have a proposal for all of you, um, to try to cure this, and, um, we'd like to pass that out to you now, and you can read through it. Thanks, Scott. Kelly will read through that. Kelly Williamson, our support.
Your council members, we are writing today regarding the city's continued use of residential tax abatements. As you know, we are members of the Columbiana Exempted Village School District Board of Education. The Board of Education is tasked with providing free public education to its students. The Board of Education primarily receives its revenue to provide this education from two sources. Number one, the state of Ohio. Number two, local residents through real, real estate property taxes. The use of residential tax abatements is particularly concerning for us, to us for several reasons. We believe that the abatements being provided to residential properties are likely to result in increased student enrollment in our school district. The school district is required to educate these stu- these new students who reside in the abated properties without receiving the full amount of real property tax revenue from the properties in which they reside. If the situation were reversed, the city would not be happy with the school district continuing granting tax exemptions from police and fire taxes while burdening the police and fire departments with additional runs and needs for services. Not only does the Board of Education receive reduced or no taxes from the abated residential properties, the other residents of the school district whose property are not abated must pay a higher tax rate since the value of the abated properties is not on the tax duplicate. This is an additional tax burden to those residents, which decreases the likelihood that they are willing to support future requests for additional property tax levies from the school district and other taxing entities. Again, if the situation were reversed, we doubt the city would be pleased with the school district making it more difficult to pass police and fire levies. The city's continued granting of residential abatements burdens us, the school district. To alleviate those burdens, we are proposing that the city consider entering into an agreement with the school district whereby the city reimburses the school district for its per pupil costs of educating students in abated residential properties. This would apply to abatements awarded after the date of this letter. To ensure the city receives its income tax from the residents of these properties, the school district is willing to reduce the amount it is to receive by the amount of income tax received by the city from the abated properties. For example, if the per pupil cost to educate a child in an abated property is six thousand dollars, and the city has received a thousand dollars in income tax from that property during the calendar year, the amount owed to the school district is five thousand dollars. In exchange, the school district will become more willing to consent to commercial and industrial abatements and TIFs proposed by the city, and is willing to consider entering into a global agreement that would allow the city to grant commercial and industrial tax incentives to property owners without school district approval. Although the details of such an arrangement need to be worked out, we believe this proposal is strongly worth considering. If the school district cannot get relieved from the burdens of the residential abasment, abatements, we are unlikely to support future requests for commercial and industrial abatements. We intend on appearing at the City Council meeting on December fifth, twenty twenty-three, to discuss this matter in more detail. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself or Scott.
Can I ask one question? Uh, at the bottom of the first page there, I, I, this is confusing. I think it's probably used to typo. Um, for example, if the per pupil cost to educate a student is six thousand, I think you meant the school district has received one thousand income tax?
It's the same. That's correct.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure, because it, it was a little confusing. Um, so I think we would obso- uh, obviously need to look at this in more detail. Um, but again, we want to be collaborative, so I, I.
And absolutely. That is why we brought the letter to the full City Council, so everybody can receive what we are offering, and we can collaborate from there.
Well, we, we, we do thank you for putting something on the table that we can look at, and we can work it, work together to come to a solution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming. We do appreciate you so very much.
Turn to the manager's report. Lance?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. So tomorrow, uh, November eighth at eleven, there is going to be a ribbon cutting out at the Columbiana Bar- Barber Shop. So, uh, the, the, um, Columbiana Chamber is putting that on, so you're all invited to do that. Uh, we mentioned, uh, Mr. Rance, uh, the, um, Chamber of Commerce is honoring them, uh, the Rance family, and they are going to do the, uh, light up on, on the seventeenth at six P.M., I believe. And then the, uh, the only thing I had to add is we worked with Bridget that, uh, the mayor will be there to read that proclamation that night at, at the same time at that light up. Uh, we've been trying to leverage, uh, an expansion by Compco to get grant funding to improve West Railroad Street. It's, it's, uh, been in shambles for many years. There's really not much, uh, stormwater down there. Means of getting rid of it, and it's very hard on the road. So, um, we contacted Jobs Ohio, and they, they are offering us a million dollar grant in towards that road improvement on West Railroad Street. So we're very excited in that, uh, ODOT is offering two hundred thousand dollars in grant funding towards the project. Now, if you recall, we did this a few years ago. Uh, we tried doing that with, um, we're going to leverage a Columbiana Boiler project. It didn't come to fruition, so we're hoping this one does. And, uh, we're, we're very thankful that Compco's committing the capital on their expansion and job creation, which these other organizations are looking at, uh, helping us because of the job creation, uh, through their road access programs. So I am attempting to apply for another five hundred thousand dollars, uh, through Omega slash Art Funding. In order to do so, we have to pass legislation, and that'll authorize me to send in the application and sign any agreements that might come of that. So that is, first reading is tonight, uh, on the agenda. But, uh, again, we want to thank, uh, Compco for. But, uh, again, we want to thank, uh, Compco for committing, uh, to their expansion and job creation, making it all possible. Uh, with that project, it will have new, um. Stormwater lines that will run down to, to the creek, so it'll be, it'll be a big project. I believe it'll be about two point one to two point six million dollars, uh, as far as these, uh, going towards those grants. With the grant money going towards that. Uh, let's see. Uh, Mark is finalizing a TIF for the Salem Regional, um. Believe that's on the agenda tonight, think so, yep. And then, uh, we're still working on, um, recommendation for, uh, from R CAF on the, uh, water and sewer rates. Rita told us that we need to make some, uh, changes to our tax legislation just to keep up. And we are in the process of doing that, I believe that'll be next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that, um, that first reading on, um, first meeting in December. Uh, Shari Frye had sent a letter to council members regarding the firing range issue. Uh, we put that in your packet, she just asked me to put that in your packet, so you can read through that. Uh, Mark completed the necessary, uh, legislation to create new conditional use for public storage within C four. And that, the first reading will take place tonight.
Right.
And then we're going to have a motion to set a public hearing for December nineteenth, uh, which will. The, the meeting will be, or the, uh, public hearing will be, uh, December nineteenth at seven fifteen. And then you could do the second reading, in the meantime, Planning Commission will look at that, uh, uh, on the fourteenth. And they will have a report that Mark's working with them to, um, to work on that, so. Uh, we've been working with the youth baseball, uh, associations, uh, uh, association in an effort to create at least to secure the. Present and future baseball facilities out on Mets Road, and we mirrored it after the school, uh, lease, um. That we did a few years ago for the ball fields, for the football and baseball facility. Um, they're, they're thinking of doing some, some, uh, upgrading out there and they just want to make sure that. You know, they can se- secure that, they don't want to put money into it, um, if, if they're not going to secure it, so. We do have that, um, I, we do have that legislation on tonight for the first reading and, uh. Not sure why, but the, the, uh, the agreement did not make the packet, so that will be on the next packet as, as a, as an attachment. AMP, uh, contacted us, they said that we need to update our Northern Power Pool. We did put a PowerPoint presentation, six decks, uh, six slides in the deck, uh, to talk about the changes. And, uh, I placed legislation on the agenda authorizing me to sign the agreement as voted. And that's, uh, be the first reading will be tonight. Street Department, we, uh, just started collecting leaves, uh, we had the salt for the first time on November first, I thought it was April Fools when I looked out there. Uh, hire, we hired an operator, uh, Water, Water Department, R CAF is doing, working on our asset management plan. And we are painting the million gallon tank this week inside and out. And we've also been repairing, uh, some roofs on some, um, wells. Waste Water Department, they've been, uh, beginning, uh, winterizing equipment. And we did get a report back that the new filter media that we put in is performing well. And they are, they've been helping the water plant hydro excavate, uh, for. For various lines, but for that, uh, copper and lead, uh, project that they're working on. Park and Cemetery, they're looking at leaves and, um, Joy Christmas, Joy Christmas is going very well. And thanks to the Friday guys from Greenford Christian for stepping up and, uh, and doing that for the, uh. Uh, the tourism, so looking forward to that, uh, season, new season. Uh, Electric Department, uh, we did, we're working on that Columbiana Plaza parking lot. Um, Trish Misos is working with, uh, uh, Lamar Advertising. And we're getting ready to try to get those murals at least printed. At this point, we might just wait till spring to hang them up, but, uh, that project's looking really good. And the Electric Department is putting up new light poles in there. As a reminder, the, um, Community Foundation donated, they, uh. Funds, I think it was eighty seven hundred dollars for the mural, uh, the, the Schmitz have given over twenty thousand dollars to the project. And the county has given us ten thousand dollars on that project to, to do, uh, so it's, it's, um, really shaping up. And then, um, we met with the entrepreneur class this week at school or last week. And this, uh, class is going to be doing two different projects for the city. So, uh, we're going to be looking at wayfinding signs and the other one is, uh, this, um. Garden of Eaton, that's owned by the Rances up here, it's a gravel parking lot and the students had some. Pretty cool ideas already on, uh, what to do there and that, uh, Becky Rance and her sisters were actually there for the presentation, so. They were very impressed with the work, so. Trish Misos thought that students were, said that they were nervous, but we couldn't tell, so that was cool, they do, they do a great job. Uh, the Electric Department per- uh, performed eight new hookups, uh, substation reports are complete. Uh, some semis versus poles have happened in the last few weeks, I believe four of them. Um, a related note, we need more C D L drivers out there, so be able to do a better job, I guess. Uh, new bucket truck arrived today, and we ordered it in twenty twenty. And I, so I asked what year, what, you know, what year is it going to be, and they, they said it was going to be twenty twenty three, but, uh. Unbelievable how long it took. Uh, we, we cut that purchase order and, and back in twenty twenty and just been holding on to it until, till today, so. Uh, a new lineman started out at the, um, Electric Department too, so. That's all I'm got, mayor.
Thank you, Lance.
Yep.
Uh, next, I would, uh. Entertain a motion to refer with the city manager, Lance Willard and Chief of Police Bill Meyer. To hire Cameron Bednar as a part-time patrolman for the Columbiana Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. A discussion. Yami Calderon.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, at this time, we'll ask, uh, this Roman Bednar to come forward. And he'll be sworn in here by our city attorney.
Constitution of the State of Ohio, Constitution of the State of Ohio. And Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbiana, Ohio. Faithfully discharge my duties as.
Congratulations. On my board. The, uh, with Lord your servants, thank you very much. You've received in your packet the bill list of eleven seven twenty twenty three. Any questions or comments on the bill packet, bill list? Be accepted. We have no old business tonight and we'll move to new business. And I would entertain a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Yami Calderon.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Motion to set a public hearing for December nineteenth, twenty twenty three at seven fifteen P M. Regarding new conditional use of public storage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Yami Calderon.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty three dash R dash six three two, first reading. It was, uh, the resolution authorizing the city manager of the City of Columbiana to prepare and submit an application. To participate in the Appalachian Regional Commission and or Ohio Governor's Office of Appalachia. Programs and to execute contracts as required.
So moved. Second.
Yami Calderon.
Tilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine four, first reading. An op- an ordinance authorizing the execution of the twenty twenty three N P P power tool participant schedule. With American Municipal Power Inc. amp.
So moved.
Second.
Yami Calderon.
Actually, I'm sorry, I did have a question on this, just kind of generally speaking, um, uh, first of all, I'm assuming we pretty much have to sign it, but.
Sure.
Um, what is this? What is this going to mean from a rate standpoint?
This will not, uh, affect the current rates, uh, for our. Let's see, our regular base rate, it could affect the, um, long-term capacity and, um. Basically, the, um, charges to get it here, but, um, they've. We haven't updated this since twenty eleven, so there's been some new charges that, that have been getting lost over the, you know. Twenty or thirty communities that are in this.
Any other questions? Yami Calderon.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine five, first reading. An ordinance declaring improvements to, to a certain parcel of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made. To directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make. Service payments in lieu of taxes and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment. Equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections. Five seven zero nine point four zero, five seven zero nine point four two. And five seven zero nine point four three, and authorizing a tax increment financing services agreement.
What he said, I mean, so moved.
Second.
I will comment that I did put lots of spaces in between the words.
Yeah, I.
I do appreciate that, thank you very much. Any questions on that? Ian?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine six, first reading. An ordinance amending the Columbiana City zoning ordinance to the extent of creating. A new conditional use of public storage garages and yards within the C four intensive and automobile. Oriented commercial zoning district within the City of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that?
Yeah.
Why not?
No, this, this is, um, it's, no, no.
No, doesn't involve you.
No. Oh, I didn't see out there. Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yami Calderon.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty three dash R dash six three three, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with Columbiana Youth Baseball Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Yami Calderon.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
There being no mo- no further new business. Uh, I return at this point, ask if there's anyone out there that would like to make a comment. Or to the council tonight. Anybody from the public? Okay, thank you. Are there any council comments? Okay.
We're all looking at you.
Okay, um, basically. Council will have to decide, um, on a couple of issues. The first is. The particular district that the property is in is zoned I two. Although one might think that would be an area that you would allow something such as a firing range, that in fact is not the case. In nineteen seventy four, when the city adopted its current zoning ordinance, um. The areas that firing ranges were permitted were not the industrial, uh, for that matter, they were not commercial. Um, so the first thing council will have to decide is. Would that be an appropriate use in an industrially zoned parcel? If so, there needs to be a zoning change beyond the question of firearms within the municipality. So there's actually two questions. Um, bottom line, council is going to need to consider this. I think council needs to discuss this, we need to discuss this in more detail before it can move forward. Okay?
Um, as just a resident, I live on the other side of the tracks and on South Main Street, I just want to question. When you have a problem with the streetlight and you've requested it. I've emailed, I've gone through all the things on the website and I've got no response. And it actually is a danger of people trip on the step, on the sidewalks there. And it's one of the old ones, right as you cross the tracks, like right when you go over past, like Columbiana view, it's one of the whole green ones, it's been busted. It hasn't had a light for three and a half years and it's still red. And I followed everything on council website when there's a street problem, so I just don't know if there's a better way to get it. There's a bunch of them.
Yeah, I can take a look at it, I didn't know Dale gave me that a couple, couple of months ago, I'm not sure what, um, I'm not sure where it's at.
So there's, there's a better way.
Yeah, that's, that's a proper way to do it, so. I'm not sure, I do know that it's, uh, rusted at the bottom, I'm, I'll just have to.
I know it's that, you know, I, I figured the question would be a whole new life, but I will say that the sidewalk's not even there and I've seen people fall, I myself.
Lance, let me ask, is there, um, a plan to replace the, the remaining green? Light posts, I know a lot of them are rusted out.
Yeah, we, we try to do, prob- I, I don't know what the number is, but I'm thinking we're doing. Yeah, we, we try to do, prob- I, I don't know what the number is, but I think we're doing, probably end up doing five or ten a year.
And you have the council comments.